John Kingsley's handling it for me, so you just talk to John. Okay. Well, the one we, the Hooper, the Timothy house? Oh, the, the, between the Timothy and. Yeah.
I don't know.
Mayor.
Yes, sir Ken, how you doing?
I hear that, I hear.
I'm glad to hear that. I've heard that somewhere before.
I knew it did.
Yeah, can you do a text for that?
Oh, wow. He, um, we get down to these guys here.
Yeah.
Right. Um. I think, I think the, the resolutions are not quite correct.
Which resolutions are about?
All of them.
Ones?
All of them for the, for the, uh, for asking for money, where we're going out asking for money.
Right.
So.
It's a funny thing.
That's for Carlton.
I know. Yeah, I think.
Big boy.
But if you, I go look at, back a little bit, this is, uh, in the whereas is what we want to do.
Mm-hmm. You can text them.
And the be resolved is. You get a sign.
Yep.
Right. Chris and I. I, I think we get, we need, there's, there's one back here that has a format I think that's correct where it says, uh, incorporate all of the petitions above or something like that. And that's.
That's this one.
Result, yeah. Yeah. All the recitals above, yeah.
Alright.
So that would have been one of them.
Yeah, you did.
Hey, Mark.
Hello, Joe, long time no see.
My hope. The Justin, three of us.
I did.
I followed him down there.
Crystal has it right now. I, I changed the play at the line. Sorry about that, young lady.
Hi Karen.
No, we're gonna follow the, the agenda. Here comes Art. I was wondering where he was. Art, I saw your wife today. What did she say, yeah? Morning David.
You know what, maybe we had a good.
Evening.
Whatever. Cause we were talking about whether we're gonna do a Tuesday or Wednesday.
A whole new sound system too.
When's the next meeting? When's the next budget be?
New microphones? Sound system?
Where we stand on the, uh, transfer tax.
City must have a lot of money.
When, when will that happen if it happens?
Must.
If they adopt the budget, that'd be January first.
Yeah. Would that be included in the budget or is it separate organs?
You, oh, okay.
It's been procedurally, I would like to know.
Okay, alright, so it would be, the budget is an ordinance.
Right, so it's in that ordinance?
Yes.
And that would take place when?
That would take place in December, like, uh.
January.
December tenth, maybe?
Yeah.
That's when it's voted on?
Right.
Yeah, that's when it would be voted on.
So you didn't include it in your administrative budget?
No.
Yes, we did not include it, and yes, they did add it.
Well, it's been, it's been discussed.
It's been discussed, yes, they, they need to decide if.
It's a different, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, new system.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, they don't move, I thought maybe they moved.
Oh, they don't move.
Gonna call the state and session the city council to order, please rise for the prayer and pledge a flag. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, let us begin the meeting by giving thanks for all the good brought to our city in the recent past. We also ask that you look out for the men of the ironworkers union who will be in Easton tomorrow to erect our peace candle. We ask that you protect them and keep them safe from harm. During this meeting, we'll discuss many things and make many decisions, but we never want to lose sight of our gratefulness to you. Thank you for your faithfulness and provisions in our lives. Thank you for each person in this meeting with a unique talents and perspectives they bring. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together and work towards common goal, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, I mean, I say it's America. You probably, what'd you say, it's man? One name, under God. Roll call, madam clerk. Either my glasses got strong when the, the flag was moved.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Eddinger?
Here.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Ms. Sultana? Mayor Panto?
Here. We'll have the approval of the agenda. Moved and approved, second. Moved in the second end, any additions, releases, or corrections? Roll call, madam clerk.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. Action on our minutes of our October thirty second meeting. To move. To approve. Moved and? Second. Seconded. Any additions, releases, or corrections? Roll call, madam clerk.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye. No, we're gonna follow the agenda. Under, under each, under, under each department.
Reports of committee.
Reports of committee. Oh, okay. Um. Presentation of council to save streets for all. We have a save streets for all tonight?
Dave, you want a discussion?
Save streets for all.
Let's say that was a short report.
There we go.
Yeah, a- after, uh, Michael Baker presented to council, uh, we put it on the council agenda to be adopted at the next meeting and it was tabled.
Okay.
So.
Mayor, if, I'm sorry Dave, if Dave wasn't here, that's where we had some discrepancies where I was under the impression we were just gonna start going for funding, I think you were under the impression, we were doing the roundabouts, Dave, can you clear that up?
Yeah, so, so the safe streets for all program is really just an investigation into, you know, you know, high, high traffic safety areas for both beds and vehicles. And so the act of council adopting it doesn't really approve anything in it, it just gives us the ability to have a plan that we can go for implementation, funding, or get grants for planning or research or whatever, whatever the case may be. Um, I, I know there, there's a lot of talk about a, a, you know, a possible roundabout at Third and Larry Holmes. It, even if we started that today, it would be a decade away and require, you know.
Lots of money.
Mm, lots of money, lots of research, lots of investigations, so, uh, I don't, I don't foresee anything like that happening soon. I think some of the smaller wins we could get would be, you know, some of the crosswork work on Larry Holmes Drive, you know, smaller pet improvements like that, so.
Just, I, I, I read the resolution and it says that, uh, uh, you know, we would be approving this and, uh, we would be going out for funding for things that are identified in it. I, and I, I'm just wondering if we need to add words on there in case we identify something else that's not in the report. No.
Um.
Uh, does it restrict us?
Well, if it's not in the report, we didn't study it. So I, I think the report is limited to what Michael Baker, you know, there, there is a federal format that you have to follow for the safe streets for all program.
Okay.
Um, so I think what's contained in the report, we would be limited to those items. I don't necessarily think that would restrict us from applying for funds for other projects. I just think anytime that you have an adopted plan and you've done your public outreach, you know, Michael Baker had, uh, you know, a lot of success reaching out online, I think they got, you know, like a thousand inquiries or, or whatever it was, so it was, you know, I, I thought that was well done, um.
Yeah, there was a lot of great feedback, um, from the public and from the committee that I participated in and, um, you know, it, it was helpful with identifying issues that people are seeing in their neighborhood.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, Dave.
Is PFM here? Oh, okay, so we're not having that presentation today. Okay. At this point, we're in the public comment for agenda items only. Art?
Mayor, why would it take so long to, uh, to get that roundabout? Why does it take a decade?
I go to the pin down. Well, it's gotta do, go through, get, get state approval. And for one, for two. Aye. Plane, design.
Funding?
Funding. And approval.
David's gonna answer your question.
We're just at the bullet points, I thought, Dave.
Yeah, Artie, it can, it can be a very long process. When, when we finished the circle two years ago, we started that in two thousand and eight. And it took, you know, that, it took that long to get to completion. The, you know, a lot of the funding for transportation projects comes through the LVTS and they have a long range transportation plan, which is twelve years. And then, once you're in the twelve year period, then you can try and jockey to get into the current four year tip. So it's a, it's, it's a very long process for large transportation projects like that. And I, I think sometimes ten years can even be, you know, aggressive when,
Right.
when you have to go through that kind of process.
Anyone else want to address city council on agenda items only? Okay, move on to, um, consent agenda, there's no consent agenda, so we'll move right into reports by council. And I will accept the fire department monthly incident report on behalf of council. And we'll move right into reports of committee, finance committee, Mr. Brown. Thank you, mayor, I will be introducing bill number eight this evening, and that's for, uh, penalty solicitor, soliciting, uh, special events. Alright. Economic development, Mr. Pinnabone? Thank you, mayor. One sec, here we are. Community activity and events. So the department completed the winter vill- village planning, provided placer AI data in support of bacon fest, met with the DRJ TBC to discuss the two hundred and fiftieth theme mural in the downtown along Bushkill Street adjacent to the Route twenty-two interchange. They met with the FM and Allentown Departments of Community and Economic Development to discuss topics of mutual concern, including affordable housing, food security, and festival management, as well as shared parking best practices. The initial phase of business resource center comple- was completed.
He doesn't have any.
Will be operational starting November seventeenth on Monday at the public market from nine to four. SBDC will be on site to provide marketing, financing assistance, business plan support to local businesses and entrepreneurs. They retained an architectural services to develop, designed for initial stabilization fees of the Hooper House restoration. They applied to TASSA for the High Line, one point two six five million dollars. And we closed a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar grant for the Bushkill Drive pump house, uh, the small sewer and water grant. Submitted additional rack P itemization to legislators for inclusion as eligible projects. They attended Legend cigar bar initial walkthrough, attended the first ever Westward Community Initiative Biz- Business Mixer, attended meeting with Lafayette College, uh, with Lafayette College administration regarding the Hooper House, met with Lanta Center regarding joint fundraising opportunities, and attended the DCNR C two P two workshop for twenty twenty-six grants. Um, the Winter Village is starting in two weeks, it will run from November twenty-eighth to December twenty-first. Fridays, four PM to eight PM, except for Black Friday. And on November twenty-eighth, which runs from twelve PM to eight PM. Saturdays, twelve to eight, and Sundays, twelve to five. Mayor, that's all I have. Black Friday will start at noon. Noon to eight on Black, Black Friday. Okay. Planning and coach committee, back, council member Rose.
Thank you, mayor.
Exactly.
For anyone who's interested in the Wood Avenue warehouse proposal, we have a few meetings coming up. Um, the first one is a special zoning meeting that will be held on Monday, December first. And the planning commission will be meeting the same week, Wednesday, December third, so keep your eye out, um, that will all be posted on the city's, uh, website. Um, the Med Ed lighting issue downtown still continues, um, but I did wanna thank Dave Hopkins, uh, director of Public Works for, um, really all of his help in coordinating this issue, um, he even stopped by a neighborhood meeting that was hosted at Bar Torino. Thanks Mark Devlin, the owner, for hosting that for the downtown neighbors last week. Um, they did go out and the, I believe, twenty-eight bulbs that were installed in a two block radius were, um, replaced, they're still too bright. And we're waiting for a decision from Med Ed and I'm hoping that, you know, they will make the right decision and give us the same lights that New Jersey is privy to, um, that are being installed right across the river. Um, also last weekend, um, I participated in hosting a food drive at the farmer's market for the project of Easton and the neighborhood center, and I just wanted to thank a few people, councilman Pinnabone, who helped me place the last pa- bag of food in the pantries on Saturday. Um, councilman Brown and also councilman-elect Graziano for coming out to support, um, it really means a lot to the two food pantries who are really feeling the pressure right now of a- additional people seeking food assistance. Um, and I really wanted to thank the community for coming out and donating food, um. The shelves were pretty empty at both locations and they were stocked by the end of that day. And I know the Boy Scouts were also out collecting this weekend, um, so it really takes everybody to come together during these tough times, but it does make an impact, so thank you. I also attended the Westward Tree Lighting Committee, um, meeting this week, that, the Westward Tree Lighting event is going to have so many fun free activities for the whole family. And that's scheduled for Saturday, December sixth, from five to eight PM. It's going to be on, uh, North twelfth, the North Twelfth Street, um, in between Paxtonos's school and Cunningham Stadium, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, um, public safety committee, council member Ruggles.
I have no report, except for the budget, so let's bring the fire chief up.
Good evening, everybody, Henry Hennings, eleven North Sixth Street. So our platoon structures, we have three platoons, we have, uh, captain and lieutenant on each platoon. First platoon is short one with the loss of Tyler Wagner. And the other two platoons are at fourteen, which is the, uh, budgeted strength. So this is just a, a quick overview, uh, between our, uh, fire reports, uh, and billing, we bring in between ten and fifteen thousand dollars per year. Uh, staffing levels for the contractor are gonna be maintained at sixteen, so we will be having a couple attend the fire academy coming up in February. Uh, healthcare costs are up twenty percent across all departments. With the latest contract settlement, we've gone to nine as a minimum manning, so we look to reduce overtime. And then, as you can see, for the fire department, uh, following NFPA standards, most of our equipment is durable goods and that has a ten year lifespan, so that has to get replaced every ten years. And as you can see on this slide, what it costs to equip a single firefighter is ten thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. That does not include the portable radio, which is roughly around eight thousand dollars, so that's just for the turnout gear. Uh, SEBs are about eight thousand, uh, examples, the turnout gear's a ten year, uh, so every five years we buy a new set to keep them in a fresh set. Um, and of course, the ropes, the hoses, which are astronomical in price, unfortunately. That's the current twenty twenty-five overtime, and we are looking to reduce that again with the nine man minimum. Uh, we're ahead of what we paid out in twenty twenty-four, which is a good sign, so hopefully in twenty-six, we can lower that even more. Any questions? I know that was kinda fast, but there's not really a lot to my budget. Anyone?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, move on to, um, anything else? That's all, public word, councilman Eddinger?
I have no report tonight, mayor.
Okay, administration committee, council member Sultana?
Mayor, I know we are discussing the budget, but I do have a few things to mention. Uh, Southside Civic Association is hosting annual tree lighting on the twenty-first. Uh, at six to seven PM, there are many wonderful organizations sponsoring it, I'm also sponsoring with giving away free toys and gifts to the children. Um, talking about just, uh, what, uh, councilwoman Christopher Stroos mentioned about, um, you know, uh, food insecurity in the city of Easton. There are many other organizations like EPM, Eastern Muslim Association, Angels of Easton, uh, they are collecting, uh, food for, for the people, uh, uh, in need the most. And, but also there are many other great restaurants who are giving away free meals or discounted meals like Mikasa, Halal Express, and I really wanna shout out Aman Restaurants, that giving away hundred meals, um, you know, like on the weekend, and many other restaurants. Um, that's all I have, mayor, and for that, I think we will be discussing the budget for administration.
Yeah, let's get into the budget, um, Mr. Chambers, let's get into the budget for administrative, we, IT coming in that as well.
Okay. Mayor, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Art, Mr. Listniki, cause he's, he's gonna go, the way we have it, uh, broken down, his finance first administration and the other budget, it just goes sequentially.
Then we'll add, uh, IT to the end. Bring you up, Maz. Okay, uh, so starting with the finance department. Um, in short, we've talked about healthcare costs, that's a trend that just runs through all the, all the departments.
What does that twenty percent represent? In dollars?
Uh.
One hundred and seventy-five thousand?
No, it's more than that.
It's about a, it's about a million dollar increase.
Close to a million dollars.
Yeah. Oh, that's right, it was four million.
Yeah.
Twenty percent.
Um, so outside of that, the, the budget for the finance department itself is, uh, on the expense side is pretty flat. Uh, we are not funding a third clerk, uh, in the department right now, we've been matching with two. We feel if there are some changes in the future, then we would, we would ask that that be reconsidered, but for the time being, we are able to, to accommodate, um, the, the workload with two clerks. Um, while we're on expenses, we can go through some of the other smaller departments, and that includes city councils, that's down, you know, three point three percent, the mayor's is down a bit, controllers, city clerk, and then the solicitor is the one that's the biggest, uh, there's the biggest drop there, and that's because the second assistant solicitor position was, is not filled, there's not, we're not recommending that that be filled, uh, for the twenty-six budget.
But this, the assistant solicitor has to be filled, cause Mr. Clark won at judiciarys.
Correct, correct, so we are, we are doing the assistant, but not the second assistant. Um, also, uh, just as a, as a line item, as you're looking at the budget, there is a line item called Pon- Bond, excuse me, Resident EIT, which was basically, we took out bonds years ago for the pension bond. That bond was pay, is paid off at the end of this year, twenty-five, so you'll see that that line drops, uh, across all the, all the different departments. We've kinda just allocated that across all the departments over the years. Uh, many of you will be familiar with this kind of snapshot. What I tried to do here is, is present the top twenty-five revenue accounts and compare them to last year's budget and where, you know, where we're looking, what sort of, uh, I guess, but you can see what, where, where there are changes. Also laid out the payment flow, so letting you know if this is something that we expect annually, if we expect it every month, weekly, daily, et cetera, so. I, I, I did send this to, to council on Monday, so you do have this. So if you have any questions on the revenues there, you'll see the biggest driver obviously is EIT, we've talked about that for a number of years. Uh, that outpaced, uh, real estate. But the couple of years back, we, we jumped, jumped over real estate as far as the percentage of our overall revenue budget. And it continues to grow, fortunately, um, but that's definitely something to, to keep an eye on, because there's only so, so many more people we can fit in the city. Um, so I've mentioned some of these already as far as the general fund, revenues, EIT, uh, non-resident EIT. We saw the impacts of that last year with the aggregate pension funds dropping, I'm sorry, uh, reaching the seventy percent mark. We were required to basically take that, the EIT for non-residents away, so that was a loss of approximately two million dollars and change. Um, so you'll see that across, across, or reflected in the twenty twenty-six budget. Um, some of the other changes were, say, solid waste over trash, proposal was for an additional two dollars per month to, uh, help offset our costs, because they do also continue to rise, so we're, we're hoping to, sorry. Outside of that, I, I don't know that there are any other, uh, large changes, one, maybe that I will highlight before I move on, is casino revenue, with the Wind Creek expansion of the last couple of years, we thought that we would see a larger growth in casino revenue, but that just hasn't come to fruition.
It's not due to the, we're, we're getting money primarily from the tables, right?
Correct, yeah, correct. Yes, we, we, we had hoped or thought, uh, forecasted, let's say, that that was going to go up, but that did not come to fruition, as I said, so we've, we've dropped that back down to kind of our, our run rate. Okay, well, unless there are any questions, we'll move on to the administration budget. And there, uh, budget, uh, is seventeen million dollars, so there are multiple, multiple revenue line items there. Uh, we're seeing a one point five percent increase, we're two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and that's, a lot of that basically is driven by EIT. We do have, uh, as I mentioned, drops in non-resident EIT, the casino, and then also bank interest. When we did have, uh, ARPA money sitting in the, in the bank that, that was bringing in more interest. In addition, the, the Fed has cut interest rates over the last, or several times now, so that just kinda keeps dropping. On the expense side, uh, expenses are up fourteen point two percent, and that is primarily because of an increase in the contingency line item. And with that, unless there are questions, I'll ask Maz to come up and we can go over the IT budget.
Mark, could you do me a favor for the public?
Sure.
Can you explain the contingency line item?
Sure, the contingency line item is, uh, basically money that is set aside kind of as a, as, I would say, as an emergency fund, if there are.
Specifically, uh, the way it was presented in the mayor's budget, um, that line item would be used for the two hundred and fiftieth, um, uh, anniversary of the nation, so there's different expenses in there that are gonna go towards different items.
Can we see a presentation on those expenses?
But we haven't even talked about it yet.
Yeah, I think.
So, how can we approve something we haven't, when are we going to talk about it?
Whenever you want to.
Next committee meeting?
Next meeting, if you want.
Yeah, that would be great.
And, um, mayor, since that's a question, uh, part of contingency is based on just Easton or Lehigh Valley and all the, you're just supposed to possibly do something. Well, we don't know yet.
Okay.
There is a Lehigh Valley two fiftieth that will probably come to us for money, but they haven't done so yet.
Okay.
Um, everybody's getting started a little bit late. But we also, we know for a fact that our Heritage Day fireworks will be going up considerably.
That's part of it.
Demand.
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify, this line item is not specifically for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, right? It, it, it is, okay.
Uh, I misspoke, sorry.
Yeah, if, if we could see a presentation next meeting on that, just so everyone's clear on what's being approved, I think that would be very helpful.
Uh, Louis, PFM, there was a confusion, they're not presenting tonight. Uh Louis, P F M, there was a confusion, they're not presenting tonight, are they coming back to the next meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna try to squeeze them in probably in the budget, one of our budget sessions before our next committee meeting.
Okay, so with that, just shift over to I T.
You're on camera, and it's your fault.
Uh Mazin Ferris went twenty, went to three south of Third Street, sorry. So basically, it's a simple, basic information that I put in here for the budget. Uh you can see the services that are paid from the I T budget for uh for this year and for next year, these are the cost. Uh some increases in some of the uh.
Is your mic on?
Uh some increases in the in the some of the line items. Uh there's a reduction of about twelve thousand dollars compared to uh to the twenty twenty-five. I'm not sure if there's any questions about any of the services that are paid.
Technology is getting expensive, Mr. Ferris.
The on average, it's five, between five and ten percent increase each year to any of the services that we have.
I met with the people from Astound and they'll be doing a forty million dollar upgrade in our city starting uh in December. Uh which is basically all all fiber.
Yeah, and there's a lot of interest in the city from fiber providers, so we hope to have some news in the next couple of months, weeks, maybe.
Could use some faster speeds downtown for sure, so that's a welcome addition and upgrade.
Yeah, I mean, speaking of that, there's three, about three or four companies that have approached us to bring fiber to Eastern, so.
Competition is good, you know?
No, definitely, yeah.
What is City Bot?
Uh that's for the website, so when somebody visit the websites and they wanna inquire about.
Oh.
Getting a permit license, if they can't find the information, they can actually put a message.
Gotcha.
And then it will just show them the link. And if they, if they can't find what they want, they can actually send the submitted message and go to the specific department.
And is that an annual contract?
Yes, it is, yeah, it's about uh ten grand.
And backup is also related to?
Sorry, which one?
Backup.
Yeah, backup.
Is it also related to the backup?
Yeah, this is for our, yeah, our applications that we use internally.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any questions for Mazin?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
They let you off easy.
Mayor, before we move on, just a quick update to the amendments I made at the last meeting. Meeting with uh Louis and Mark over the last two weeks. With the D transfer tax increase, um we're able to create those positions without using that. We're reckon, because of the fluctuation, we're not gonna use it for a police officer, what have you. So I'm recommending using that application for open space. Um across our horse trail, pools, parks, the high line, um so that money would go directly to the open space initiatives.
I'm, I don't know about what amendments you're talking about, I don't think we ever took a vote on your amendments.
We wouldn't take a vote on them, right? It wouldn't be till the end.
We'd take a vote to see if we were moving forward. I don't know why you would add a police officer when crime is down. We've added eleven police officers who've been in office. We went from forty-eight to fifty-three, no, no, forty-two to fifty-three, forty-two to fifty-three officers. And everything is great.
And also, we were told that we would be receiving some kind of uh proposal that you had made, but I didn't receive any.
I didn't send it, um Louis, we talked about it was supposed to come at the end of the uh at the end of the budget.
Okay.
You know, crime is down, however, there are a lot of issues that are under crime that we are not addressing. Um and we could bring the chief in to have that discussion, specifically downtown. Um there's a lot of things and a lot of complaints that we just aren't addressing, cause we don't have enough people.
Like what?
Some of our unhoused population running swings to people down at the circle. Uh people sticking their hands in and out of windows when people are parked at the red lights. I've had the conversation with the chief, um and he would direct people, uh an officer downtown to to finish up a lot of the issues we have. A lot of the issues that we have occurring downtown. I mean, if we're discussing it, there's evenings when we only have six, seven police officers on the whole shift of the entire city. Six, seven police officers, maybe for thirty-one thousand five hundred, I'd rather be reactive than proactive. And then we're operating at the same level with thirty-one thousand five hundred residents as we did with twenty-four thousand. Uh it it just doesn't make sense for me from a standpoint of safety, we're increasing the population. Our our festivals are having record numbers, but we're not increasing safety.
And I mean, we all received the email from um the resident on Cattell Street. I've been going back and forth with her, um she just sent me a video that um her daughter took at one thirty in the morning. And it's in the house, the windows are closed and you can just hear, I don't even know how they're handling this, I went up this past weekend. We we definitely need some enforcement up there Thursday night through Saturday night, I think, in the out, between the hours of eleven thirty and two in the morning. There, there is a lot of public drunkenness going on, um I have photos that I will send everyone. Um probably tomorrow and I'll forward the video. The neighbors are just picking up trash for days and she did also, I encouraged her to reach out to the college who. I saw their response kind of pushed it on the city at this point. And um I appreciate the addition of the the trash can, which I think, you know, it does help having having a receptacle avail available. But we really need some enforcement up there. I also received um several calls from residents in South Side about idling um tractor trailer cabs. Sitting at all hours of the night. Um and and they are calling the non-emergency number and they're not really getting anywhere. I I I think we have to push some of these quality of life issues, because it's something that pushes people to the brink of wanting to move out of the city. And I I don't want that experience for our residents.
Additionally, uh talking with the chief, we have the confluence, which is gonna bring a great amount of people within the next year. There's another plan for a hundred and fifty units on South Side. It's gonna take about a year and a little over to have a police officer on the streets. So if we wait till the last minute, we could be in in a in a not a good situation.
I mean, I I I think that the conversation is like, why, why are we not? Maybe, is it, we're not enforcing some of these issues, or is it that a stopping issue? Because I I keep getting, keep getting the same calls over and over again.
I I I heard earlier that uh I think it was uh Councilman Penimmo had mentioned uh bringing police officers back downtown. It's not a bad idea, we should do that before and it worked, I mean. Uh people got familiar with who that uh officer was downtown, merchants and people, uh it was a good uh. Respect both ways, everybody knew everybody and and I think it's a good quality of life issue to look at and uh have an officer down there. Uh especially during the weekend, Friday through.
On bikes, on bikes and on foot, I have talked to the ch- to Chief Scouser about it and he seemed open to it. Um once um some new recruits got out of the academy, but I would like to see a plan in place for that too. Because it it is something that I've noticed, I mean, I had to call cops a few weeks ago, on a Friday morning, I was off. And they they did come quickly, but kids were getting on a school bus and there was a man with no pants on. Having an episode, I don't know, you know, I don't know the details of it, but I think it would help to have some police presence.
Isn't that mental health issue?
I don't know if it was mental or drug use, I'll be honest, or both it could be. I'm just noticing an increase, um and I'm getting complaints downtown and it's not, and some of it is people. I was walking over to the Pearlie Baker's Grand uh ribbon cutting the other week and there was some guy speeding down Sitgreaves yelling racist. Horrible, ha- horrible language, I mean, I've just, I'm noticing an uptick and it it's, it does, it scares me, I'll be honest. I and I think that having more presence, you know, would be helpful.
There was an incident, uh I'm sorry, Councilman Crystal, uh uh you remember, might have been about two weeks ago where an elderly woman fell downtown and hit her head. And it was twenty-two minutes before we arrived. At the same time, there was a shooting on Fourteenth Street, all our police that we had, which was not a whole hell of a lot, were up there and couldn't get down here. God forbid, it was a a uh something more serious than a fall and and a hit to the head, we'd have been in trouble.
The response time is not necessarily the police's fault. Remember when you called the nine-one-one center, which is county managed, county run? The call taker has to give it off to a dispatcher, so that takes time and sometimes it takes a long time. We've already had where it's been as long as ten minutes.
Well, and I don't disagree, Mayor, the with that process, but unfortunately at this time, they were dealing with the shooting on Fourteenth Street.
All tho- all those concerns um are genuine, but at the same time, I don't feel like this is something we need police force for. Like, there should be, I understand, I, I mean, a couple of the incidents that were mentioned at the last meeting or the the meeting when we have virtually. Uh it this, this sounds like mental health issues and I think we need more community advocates or more money. To educate our people, not police, like police enforcement has nothing to do if something, someone is facing. Mental disability or job loss or housing insecurity, more population brings more housing insecurity. Maybe we should be focusing our, you know, our, we should be focused on. Like on on the on the right issues, we should be addressing the right concerns. I I I don't agree hiring more more police officers and I understand, uh and I totally agree with Mayor Panto, like. I I I think we can definitely utilize our police officer.
Yeah, I I kind of think that they both walk, work in and in, have several relatives that are officers in the city. Um in Philadelphia and one of the things they've done is they've brought on more people for that kind of kind of a challenge, it is a challenge. The sending an officer out there as a mental health issue and they're not equipped to be able to deal with that. So I I I kind of think that we should be looking at both sides of that that coin, looking at hiring another person. For that uh mental health officer that's gonna be tagged on a night shift or middle shift and one on a day shift and then or an officer. To be there also.
Officer Crosson is assigned to the downtown during the day, he is assigned to the downtown.
But we need someone in the evenings, um when people are going to restaurants uh as well and, you know, I.
So is this, is this new officer only gonna be downtown in the evening?
I don't know, I haven't seen the plan yet, I did speak with.
When I, when I talk. That's the issue.
When I talk to.
For me anyways.
We need someone on foot or on bike that that we can see.
When I talk to the chief.
How we're gonna address somebody out on Fourteenth Street, somebody on South Side, somebody on College Hill. One person is not gonna be doing all of this.
No, I I, I agree with you.
We're throwing a person at this and saying, oh, this is going to solve things, that's not the case.
No, I I agree with you, I don't think it's gonna solve it.
Do we need more people, or is it, we're not enforcing enough?
Well, I know there's some instances where a whole shift, we could have four to six police officers.
Yeah.
For thirty-one thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
However you slice it, that's a problem, right, I mean, four.
I think if that's the case and we think that that's a problem, then I think we need to take a look at our staffing. And say, okay, where do we need to be, I I I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, if we're at thirty-one thousand and we need. Fifty, or or I'm not sure, but I mean, if we need another five, or whatever, you know, then.
But Mayor, what's the number that we try to be at, but we never hit because of retirements?
Fifty-three. Sixty-two, isn't it?
No, sixty-two.
Sixty-two, yeah.
Right, so and we're at fifty-three, we never get to.
We never get, because we just, we just, we have a retirement tomorrow.
But I mean, my point is, the city before me, I don't know, Mayor, if it was before you or during you, created. Uh uh we we should have sixty-two officers and we're consistently at fifty-three for whatever reason, so right off the bat, we're not fulfilling where we've said we needed to be.
And the mayor and I were talking about that just the other day, I mean, we hire a brand new police officer. That person isn't on the street for what, nine months?
Five months. Right, a year.
Five months, I mean, so even if we, even if we did this, nothing that happened for these nine months.
Agreed.
Depending on when academies are.
If we don't plan for it, we're in trouble, right, I mean, we're we're, we have more and more people moving here.
Right, so if you wait for another year or two and you need two or three, now you're waiting another year, you push it out.
Yeah.
But I know the our staffing level is supposed to be sixty-two, we'd never get by fifty-three and I understand it's because of retirement.
Yeah.
But, you know, maybe it was okay at twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, we're at thirty-one five and by twenty-seven, we're gonna be thirty-two something. I think we need to start planning for that. I mean, I think it it might have, should have been planned for over the year and we haven't, and I think we should start doing it now.
You can address every problem with money, so if you wanna add a hundred thousand dollars to the budget, find it.
We did.
No, you raised taxes to find it.
We took your meter money, lowered the parking garage and increased the meters that quarter.
And added a half a percent to the transfer tax.
Which, as I stated at the beginning of this meeting, was gonna go to open space, just with the parking, we uh increased police officer. A revenue agent and finance that was cut and because of that, we're not collecting fees the way we should. Uh and a parking enforcement officer, because the neighborhoods are complaining every night and every weekend, because there's no parking enforcement. For safety issues, people are parked on corners, people are parked in the intersections and we've we've.
Well, I don't understand that, because there's a parking enforcement on every night, there's an officer on every night.
Downtown.
Everywhere, all through the city.
Downtown, downtown, Mayor, we we don't have enough, we have three, what what do we have, Louis, how many do we have?
First of all, I think this is, this is an operational discussion that should include the police chief, so we can have a very, very accurate discussion. Um but typically, the it's, it, there's a, there's a minimum staffing level, about five police officers at night, at any given time.
Parking enforcement.
A minimum, oh parking enforcement?
That's what we're just asking, yeah.
Uh it fluctuates, cause we have part timers.
But we have about three. And a lot of nights, we have none.
We we fluctuate anywhere between three and seven, depending on the month.
I I don't remember seeing seven on staff ever and I have to call Mister Gilbert almost daily.
This summer, this summer, we usually have more because there's um students who come back from college who are part-time, part-time P E Os. So we do fluctuate.
They may be on College Hill, but they're not on in the West Ward and South.
College students, not not on College Hill.
No, I mean, he's he's saying they, there's more because the college students come back, so maybe they're on College Hill enforcing. But but then we're getting complaints there, we had to paint corners. Steve Hopkins has a plan to paint corners, because we're getting calls in College Hill all the time for people parking on corners, they can't see making the turns.
My my suggestion to you.
I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Camp, but I think we should have the chief, I think we should have the chief here, because some, some deeper discussion needs to be had with it. Not not to say that, the chief dealt with this before, well, we might have to look at that plan again and see what that was to maybe upgrade it. Uh is there any discussion on the revenue officer I'm proposing?
Just for clarity, what we do is typically go through all the budget presentations. Uh this year, we're reviewing a summary, because we're expecting council to address any, any detailed issues on any of the line items. Which we've done in the past, um and then at the end, Mark and I uh present to council. These changes, and at that point, if it's unbalanced, it's up to council then to debate.
And then the next day is scheduled for the final uh budget hearing for approval.
That that's correct, so um Mister Pinnabone, what we did was, we've been working with Mister Pinnabone to take into consideration. Um his proposed changes to the budget, which will then be itemized at the last session and presented to council. With anyone else who has any other changes.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor, the only thing I I have, and so we did the budget presentation, I have one item. And that's uh my sent city council on the request of um Mrs. Rose. Um and an unofficial update of uh Bacon Fest and Garlic Fest numbers. It's unofficial, because until we get the, the numbers audited, uh they'll stay that way, so it's a matter of semantics. But we did our best to put together these numbers, we sent them to council, we can talk about it at the next meeting, I didn't expect to talk about it today.
Well, tonight is the way we're gonna get um additional funding for the festivals. Um and I know that John Kingsley has been, is also talking to businesses about what they see. As going back and buying stuff, whether it's dinner or or shopping in the stores. Uh he's trying to ascertain what what would impact the fe- festivals have on that. But we've added fifty dollars per vendor fee to the fee, to the fee it costs, they gotta pay the city what it costs and. With Bacon Fest, it would have been another sixty-five hundred dollars. And we already made money from from parking versus revenue versus expenses, so that additional sixty-five hundred dollars. Is gonna go towards um and we are gonna shore up the um. Packet that they the vendors get when they get their business slices. To include cleanliness, because the Garlic Fest was a real mess this year. And we wanna make sure that they, if they're not cleaning it up, they'll be responsible and pay for it.
Louis, or Mayor, whoever, do do we have revenue versus expenditures for the Garlic Fest and bacon, are you gonna send both out?
Yes, I sent those out and we can discuss it uh at the next committee meeting.
You sent it out already?
I did, I just sent it. I did, I just sent it.
Alright, thank you.
I just wanna make you guys aware of it, so you can study it, look at it, and ask questions in between.
Uh, Louis, I'm sorry, uh, are we gonna have them come in, as we did in the past, to discuss part of their budget? I, I mean, uh, their, uh, their festivals, I know about two years ago, we had Jared come in. And he talked about, uh, the, the growth, we had them to explain, uh. What revenues they were receiving, so and so forth.
Unless council asks for them to come in, we're not expecting them to come in anytime soon as part of the budget process.
Okay.
Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, anybody else have any questions for Louis or Mark? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, reporter, the solicitor.
Mr. Shear.
Thank you, um, excuse me, I had no report until I listened to the budget, um, so I just wanna make it clear. That when we're dealing with, uh, certain quality life issues at enforcement, hopefully you'll be able to take care of it civilly, because. Where you've eliminated the position of the person who would have been primarily assigned to go after judgments, et cetera. So that's, but otherwise, I have no report.
Okay, may, reporter the mayor, I just wanna thank the Recreation Department and Mister Hopkins. For a really nice Veterans Ceremony, Veterans Day Ceremony yesterday, um. The Veterans, Joint Veterans Council decided not to do it, and our Recreation Neighborhood Programs Department picked it up, and. Really did a nice job yesterday, so I really wanna thank them, although it was very cold, it was well attended, yes, it was.
The wind omen's blew me away.
Well, you gotta get a little taller.
I know, I know, mayor.
And, uh, yesterday I attended the de- rededication of the George Taylor Monument. In Eastern Cemetery, which was very well attended, very nice also, uh, the Daughters of the American Revolution were there, and. It was restored by a local company, Preservation Works, uh, Rob Wozniak and, and his team did a great job on that. And they replaced the beak on the eagle, uh, it looks nice, it really does, um. I also wanna let everyone know that the ironworkers will be in tomorrow to put up the candle, so that will set state, some closure of some streets. Um, the hotel steel is finally here, so you see the hotel going up a little quicker than Skelton. And I just wanna give council an update on my assistant, Carlton Ketchin, is in rehab out at, on twenty-fifth. Twenty-seven block of, uh, Rethan Street, uh, he's in room four oh one, we have a card we're gonna s- take to him. We pass it around, we're taking it to him tomorrow, um.
It says getting a lot of visitors.
He's getting a lot of visitors, he's also keeping track of his visitors, so he has a little book there that you have to sign in.
That's administrative.
Um, and I just wanna mention, if city council has any volunteer that they feel. Is deserving of the Gretchen Renshaw Award, we give out at the peace candle lighting, let me know, just send me an email with a name and. We'll, we'll throw them into the mix as a nomination, but we do give out the Gretchen Renshaw Community Volunteer Award every year. In honor of, uh, my assistant who passed away in nineteen eighty.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven? Yeah, cause it was under the anniversary of the city as a city, um, she, uh, passed away and. Uh, complications from her car accident she was in, um, and had a stroke and, and a blood clot, um. Well, just send it to me, anybody you think is deserving of the Gretchen Renshaw Award, it's, it's given out at the candle lighting. Which is November twenty-ninth, which is my birthday, so I'll have a big candle instead of seventy-four little candles, I have one big candle. Alright, moving on to Mister Campos.
Seventy-four.
No report?
No report.
Okay, uh, correspondence, there's no correspondence, no unfinished business, bill number seventy-nine, Mister, Madam Clerk.
Bill number seventy-nine, an ordinance amending the non-uniform P M R S. Second.
Moved and seconding discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
Right, moving right into new business, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing Eastern D C E D to apply to local share account for three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. To purchase a vehicle road barriers for special events.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconding discussion?
Doctor Ruggles. Um, as I was telling you earlier, I think all of these need to have that wording.
Right.
That was a little bit later in, um.
The, the, the one where it says be resolved that the applicant does hereby designate, and makes all the recitals part of the, um. Resolution.
Yeah, and just brings them down, it's.
It's all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion, questions, roll call.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
So unfortunately, we have to spend taxpayer money on this, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, a lot of money, but, uh, we want safety to be res. We wanna be responsible for all the safety of the people who come to our festivals every year, so we wanna make sure we protect them. Barriers. No, not the orange ones, these are, these, these will stop a car or a truck. They hit it, they're, they're dead.
Um, a resolution authorizing Eastern D C E D to apply for local share account for a grant of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To remediate Heil Park Pool.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconding discussion, that's part of it, we get that much, we're happy, roll call.
Miss Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
A resolution approving the adoption of the city's safe streets for all plan.
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second in discussion? So Dave, we're, we're approving the plan, but we're not spending the money, okay, roll call, please.
Uh, Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Seltan?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing Eastern D C E D to apply for public library facilities, Keystone Grant.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, um, I have some discussion, um. So the school district is asking us to pass this resolution, or they asking us to do anything further? Like lobbying, or usually when we were going for this amount of money, we're going out to Harrisburg, we're making a trip, or we're walking the halls of. Harrisburg, asking for these considerations. Do we know, Louis?
Mayor, that has not come up, at all, alright.
Move on.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing Eastern D C E D to apply for local share account for grants in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For repairs to the H V A C system at the Eastern Area Public Library.
So they want a million dollars?
So moved. And then discussion.
Second?
Is there a second?
Who's second?
Second.
Second.
Mister Brown?
Uh, wait, I had discussion, mayor, I don't know if you know or Louis, so we're applying for these, for the library on behalf of the school district. Is the school district applying?
School district's applying, we're just supporting it.
So this is all, we're, we're just supporting, so they're gonna take the lead on it.
Yeah, they have to, it's their, it's their money.
Alright.
We, we're going after our own money.
Right.
The West Ward Community Center's one.
Right.
Um, and anything else that comes up.
That's why I was making sure that this was the district taking the lead on it.
Yeah, they are.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing a fund agreement through the Lehigh Valley Community Foundation for the restoration of historic Hooper House.
So moved, second.
Discussion?
Do we have any updates on the Hooper House, just out of curiosity?
The update is, uh, Mister Clark is, uh, was in court, I guess, no, three weeks ago now.
Oh, we, we're, they're still negotiating the.
Yeah, they're negotiating, but we were in court three weeks ago.
Yeah.
And I think we got everything approved in our favor, but. We still have, uh, some negotiating to do about. The money that we give the Rock Church for the Hooper House will be invested into the Timothy House. So we'll have that restored inside and out, we're, we're, they're, they're, they're negotiating right now is whether. Who, who's gonna be on the committee to determine the disbursements and approve the expenses.
Gotcha.
So we want, we wanna make sure we have some representation on that council.
Thank you for that update.
None of us going to the church?
No, unfortunately not, which needs it.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
A resolution approving an appointment to the planning commission.
So moved.
Second.
Who is it?
It's on Jay?
Oh, 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 yeah, Shay, yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I'll wait for discussion.
Okay, so.
Yeah, Shay, I talked to him.
A motion?
We have a motion and a second?
I second it.
You second it?
Me.
Okay.
Um, ma- mayor, I've asked for his resume, I don't know if you saw my email.
I didn't see it.
Okay, I, I just didn't have any information about it, I was curious.
I met with him and we did it all early.
What's his background?
His background is basically, um, he lives on College Hill, and he lives, um, he is, uh. The nephew of Kent Green, like, that I, that's what I remember, I remember talking about developments and. Projects in Eastern, and what he's for, what he's against.
Well, it.
Hey, you got it.
Uh, do we have, but can we get a resume?
Yeah, I'll get a resume.
Okay, I just, I'm curious about his background.
I'll get a resume.
Before voting on it.
Mayor, just, just a question more for the solicitor, is there a conflict that he's the nephew of the chair of the planning commission?
He, he's actually, I, I, I met with Mister Green earlier today, and I asked about the, the, and he disclosed that he's. Married to his niece, so it's, so there's no blood relationship, that, that, that still wouldn't be, you know, the. It wouldn't necessarily be a conflict, as, as far as, you have multiple family members, that's, if they ever had an app, if they ever had a development, you'd have. Problem, cause two men, members would have to recuse themselves, but, uh, you know, that's just a matter of your own choice. If you feel uncomfortable about the balance, that's, you know, but, but there'd be nothing illegal about it. It's like living in Chapman, bro.
Who nominated his name?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
I'm having a real hard time getting people to serve on boards that meet regularly.
And we need, we actually need for the, for the planning commission, even, um, we're gonna be one short in, in, in a month and a half. When, when Mister Graziano, uh, moves, moves to this table. And, uh, it's really important that, we've been working with six council people, it's actually pretty amazing that during the warehouse run. Every one of the council members showed up for every one of those meetings, and those meetings are equal to four of our city council meetings. Since they go to midnight now, um, but, uh, um, so in any event, uh. Uh, it is important to come up with another name and be prepared to fill the board.
Well, the mayor just got an application today for that position.
Yeah, I, the, there are a few other people who have mentioned they're interested, so ask them to forward their resumes to the mayor.
It's going to the Joel, it's going to Joel.
Oh, okay.
What?
The resumes.
Not for, not for the planning commission?
No, not for the planning commission, for the, um.
Solicitorship? Oh, I didn't know, I mean, I didn't know, you weren't talking about that. They're going, they, by the way, the resumes go through H R, um, I, I'll.
Right.
I'll, they'll, they'll, they'll hopefully give me a chance to look at them, I'm always joking, they will give me a chance to look at them. But, uh, it, it, the process for that interview process, the committee process, through administration and, and, uh. Uh, and not, not in by any means my choice. I hopefully, I get like five percent consideration.
Would we be able to table the vote until we review the resume?
Sure. They won't be, you won't be at the warehouse meeting.
It, it's, it's just as well, because you missed, if you missed the last four meetings, shouldn't be voting.
That's true, there's a lot to catch up on.
Okay, yeah, we could table it.
Table it till, when, do you wanna table it till?
Um, till, till the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm sure if we could get the resume out, we could all take a look and discuss, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I moved the table.
Table, move the table.
Um, Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
And Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Louis, you wanna table the trolley driver too?
Okay, you're happy with it?
I, I, I reviewed it, I, I understand everything there.
Resolution approving the salary and wage for a trolley driver.
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconding discussion? We feel that this price would get us, uh, some applicants, right now, we've been having a very hard time getting anyone, and Winterfest, we plan on running. The trolley around town and into the neighborhoods to bring people down to the Winterfest. So that's why we're upping it to thirty-five dollars, but it is a part-time position.
But that's also seasonal, right, man?
Hmm, and seasonal. Roll call.
Miss Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Ettinger?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
A resolution approving a third handicap parking space at one fifty South Twelfth Street.
You've heard. So moved.
Second.
I have a question. I'm seeing a resolution underneath that there should not be more than two parking, handicap parking, right? And this is the third one.
The third one is, has to get council approval, council approval. They can automatically give two. The lady, I met her, she came into City Hall in her wheelchair, she's in a wheel, she's confined to a wheelchair.
I know we've made, uh, we voted for three in the past.
I've never seen you not vote for three, just a, the observation.
One of the problems we're having is in the downtown with the handicap parking spaces, because it's by permit only. And I, I had somebody got a two hundred dollar ticket, which is a sizable amount of money, um, he parked his car there, he has a handicap plate. He parked his car in where he saw a handicap parking space, now, in the neighborhoods, I believe, at least it used to be this way. That it was a handicap parking space that wasn't given to one person, it was given, anybody had a handicap.
Given to one person now, they're a permit number for that person.
Yeah, well, it's creating a lot of problems, two hundred dollars is a lot of money.
I mean, are we able to waive the first time that if someone makes a mistake like that, I do think it is unintentional.
Well, it's, it's out here on Third Street where the lady puts cones out.
Yeah.
Or, I think Marcus Gilbert is, 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 is very helpful with that, if he sees that it was a mistake, I think he does.
I would hope so, that's a, I, it's a big fine for someone, if they do have handicap tags, just making a mistake, I mean, if it's more than once, obviously.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
She died?
Perhaps Marcus can look into that.
Alright, we'll look into that. Nor Second Street, try, try Joe Gill, cause the medical paperwork is for the wife.
Have Joe look into it, he doesn't.
Yeah, if so, if someone passes away, there is absolutely no question, uh, that spot is to be taken, taken back. And, and when Tom Hess was the, um
He would do it.
He, he, he used to look at the obituaries to make sure that um, uh, that, that the minute that somebody was no longer entitled, that we had a couple of cases with the Florida
Florida Health where, where the spouse actually came in with a new application because the spouse was similar age.
Other one for California.
At least wait a few weeks, that's pretty tough.
My goodness.
Well, he didn't do it, my, my little league coach, his son died, had a handicap spot, it was removed the day of the funeral.
They allow the hearse in for twenty-four hours.
Move on, Miss, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Seltana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
A resolution approving a third handicap parking space at eleven fourteen Washington Street.
So moved.
Second. Move in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Seltana?
Aye.
And we have bill number eighty being introduced, an ordinance amending chapter four fifteen peddling, soliciting and special events.
Introduce.
That's for me.
That's
So introduce.
Introduced by Mr. Brown.
Okay, she, she has a reminder.
Okay, public, that's all I have.
Okay. Um, moving on. We have the public comment on any item at all that pertains to the city of Easton. Art?
Anything new with the uh, wifi for the city?
We, we have a stand, we're gonna put forty million dollars worth of upgrades, but in their fiber network for downtown, so that'll help. But we don't have any, anything else.
Question, what's going on at the Larry Holmes Park?
That is, um, for the sanitary line under the river.
Is it going anywhere except to south side?
Goes, goes to six eleven and down to the plant. Mr. Hopkins will update you.
It's, um, it's for a, a new sewage pumping main that was drilled under the river to Delaware Canal Park. Um, just, just out of interest, it was eight hundred feet long and fifty foot under the riverbed. And they had to go back to the parking lot in order to get the right trajectory, it's not actually gonna be in the parking lot, but that's the only way they could drill it. So they're in the process tomorrow of actually pulling the pipe back through all eight hundred feet of it. They, they got halfway through of pulling it and the, and they had a mechanical failure, so they had to pull it back out and start again, but
Call me, I had to pour it for me.
Wha- what's amazing is they had a stake in the ground, but that was their target stake and they missed it by three feet, which is
Three feet? Wow, that's a lot.
You think?
Oh, yeah.
I thi- I think the technology is amazing that it could be that deep and that long and they, they got that close, it was, it's a pretty interesting project.
What's the diameter?
It is a, it is a twenty inch.
Wow.
It's pretty big. So they drilled a twenty-four inch pipe and, and pulled back a twenty. That was for the pilot hole. So what they do is they drill the pilot and then they ream it out to the size they want it and then they pull the new pipe back through. So, it's replacing nineteen twenty.
Cool, nineteen twenty.
Oh, it's a hundred years.
Yeah, it's a hundred years, it should last a hundred years.
That's it?
Uh, good evening, Council Dominic Trabasi, D O M I N I C T R A B O S C I. Um, I'm here actually speaking on behalf of Ronald Johnson, he was just here in the back, but he had to run to a medical appointment, so he asked that I read, um, the script that he prepared. Although I very much agree with the sentiment. Uh, it reads the following, these are his words. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I wanna begin by giving thanks to the indigenous Lenape people who once inhabited the land we now proudly call the city of Easton long before the walking purchase and the colonial displacement that followed. Their story echoes the experiences of many indigenous communities across the global south who have suffered dispossession under trade agreements and exploitative economic policies. I also want to express my deep gratitude to our organized laborers and working families who make Easton what it is. A union city rooted in human dignity, solidarity and hard work. To my brothers and sisters of the A T U, thank you for keeping our community moving, I grew up riding those Lanta buses across the Lehigh Valley. To our teachers, food service workers, custodians and school staff of the Eastern Area School District. Thank you for nourishing both the bodies and the minds of our future generations, but gratitude alone is not enough. We must remain vigilant, we must challenge prejudice wherever it appears and ensure that our city fosters inclusion, understanding and justice for all who call Easton home. That's why I continue to advocate for a welcoming ordinance, because no one's birthplace, skin color or accent should ever make them feel unsafe or unwelcome in our city. At our last council meeting, many Eastern residents came forward in support of such an ordinance. Sadly, we also heard from, we also heard hateful rhetoric from a man from Palmer Township aimed at denying the children of migrant workers their right to education and safety. This is unacceptable, Easton must stand apart from hate. I fear the harm these masked Gestapos have inflicted upon our children is irreversible. Children as young as one years old have damaged eyes as a result of the state sanctioned violence, not to mention the traumas related to family separation. Let us remember, the thirteenth amendment ratified on December sixth eighteen sixty-five abolished slavery and involuntary servitude in the United States with one exception. Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime, shall exist within the United States. That exception has been exploited for over a half a century, for over a century and a half, excuse me. Today, it manifests in our immigration detention system where thousands of men, women and children, many of them taxpayers and essential workers are subjected to inhumane treatment for for-profit detention centers run by corporations like the G E O Group, Core Civic and Palantir Technologies. These companies make billions by exploiting human suffering, profiting, profiting from labor that amounts to modern day slavery. Let me be clear, I am not a narco terrorist and neither are the impoverished fishermen and women in the Caribbean and South America who are suffering under imperialist bombing funded by our tax dollars to the Secretary of War. I am not an illegal alien and neither are the sixty thousand plus hardworking undocumented labors in Pennsylvania. People who harvest our food, clean our workplaces and care for our loved ones, often for poverty wages and without basic rights. These hateful labels, narco terrorists, illegal alien, were invented by fascist minded billionaires who seek to divide and dehumanize working people from the comfort of their mansions so they can continue to exploit our labor and weaken our unions. But Easton is better than that, we are a city built by labor, by love and by resilience. Our history teaches us that when we stand together across race, language and background, we win together. So I ask the city council once again, let us honor Easton's true legacy by passing a welcoming ordinance that protects our immigrant neighbors and strengthens our entire community. Because the fight for immigrant justice is the fight for workers' rights and the fight for workers' rights is the fight for our shared humanity, thank you.
Thank you, Dominic.
You want that for the record? Do you want the letter for the record?
Thank you, Dominic.
Just wanna announce that Governor Shapiro has just signed the budget into law, so that's good. For us, there was two million dollars.
Made of money.
Anybody else wanna address city council on agenda, on any item, any item concerning the city of Easton? Hearing non-alternative motion for adjournment, do you wanna? Oh, we, wanna talk about the schedule for the next holidays.
Okay.
So, we talked about it today.
Our second meeting is the twenty-fourth.
We're gonna change, we're gonna change.
Well, that's the second meeting, we have, yeah, yeah.
The night before Thanksgiving, we're gonna move to
Tuesday night, November
We're gonna have this committee meeting and the regular state session. So we're gonna move it to November.
We're, it's November twenty-fifth, Tuesday. And we'll have the
And then Christmas Eve, we'll move to the day before.
Well, we'll have a committee meeting and the city council meeting.